Nicole. Suggestions for the new officers of the board? Um, how? On the website, there's no tab for the officers. I don't have any email or phone numbers. I don't have any way to contact the board. And how do I do that? And Steve said, right, we did talk about that before. Sorry, it's trying to get me to join audio, but you're right. We did talk about that previously. And that has not been taken care of. So I agree, it should. We talked to Michelle and we plan to, but fortunately, we were helping Michelle with some other things on the website. And I think that we do need to add one more tab about the board bylaws minutes and all of that. If we can get board, the board members pictures and we can also add other things there, but we should have that soon. Just so people can see who we are. But Beth, that's right. But right, sorry, but it's popping up again. Hold on one second. Just change the spotlight. Okay. Oh, I forgot I was gonna say, so. You were asking, asking for, right, suggestions, feedback, but who do we contact? We contact Michelle? If I were to give a con, if I had some feedback, do I give it to Michelle or? Nicole, Sal, Jamie, I have Jamie's number. But that's her personal number, her email address. So who do I contact? Right? Okay. And we also do have an email address for the board. So it's board@dhcc.org. Or president. You can do info@dhcc.org. We'll talk more about that later, about how we can make sure that everybody is getting contacted appropriately. Or if anybody wants to share a concern or any information or an idea to the board to be able to get that directly to us through our email address. So the board will be able to receive those emails and we would be able to address whatever the questions or concerns are. It's important that we are transparent though with the community for sure. Completely agree. Nicole.
Hi Beth, yes, I agree with you. Like we talked earlier in the meeting, right? We had two resignations. And we are working on the fixing the foundation to make us a strong board again. And then also noticing that communication needs to be improved as well. It's also on our list of things to do is to improve communication through the board and with the community. So I do have a list of things that we are working on, trying to implement. We do have the community at, community email address if you need to contact the board. Also understand that we have a pretty extensive list of things that we are going to be working on in the next couple of months. And so we are prioritizing the bylaws. That's going to be a huge one. Communication will also be another one. And we have a few others and things that we will add to our list of goals. But thank you so much for bringing that up. I really appreciate it. And we have noticed that that is a concern and that's something that we are working on and adding to our list of things to work on to improve. Okay, Beth, are you good? All right. Thank you, Beth. Yes, if we can get Tim spotlighted, please. Hi Janice. Long time no see. Okay, Janice is now going to be interpreting for Nicole. I'll make sure that she sees her. Okay. And Nicole said, thank you so much for being here. Okay, now we are ready to continue. So this is Tim. There's always room for improvement. And I wish that we had a place for us to continue with unfinished business. The right, where have the bylaws been? They should still be there on unfinished business. Since they haven't been completed. And then there was a resignation because of conflict of interest. But I've been coming to meetings for a while and they always say that you're working on the bylaws. But you've been saying that now. And then now Sal had to leave. And the bylaws still are not finished. So I'm a little bit concerned. So that it's not on unfinished business. This is Steve. I can respond to Tim's question. Last year we had to right, we had three in one. And so we were not able to finish that. And Michelle's concern was the grant funding and how the bylaws were written. So like for advisors, right? It says advisors, that's a people were saying, wait, what is that? That, why are we giving money to advisors? Right? And it said something about 40 months and so we need to change some of the verbiage in the bylaws. And then also for the minimum board members, it does say a minimum of four. And again, our numbers have always fluctuated. And so we need to make sure that we are realistic with that. Once we get that done, then we also have which we had Tricia was involved and we wanted to make sure that things were passed at that time too, because we were having issues with the bylaws then too. That was announced and passed, I believe it was in January. Right? So then that was completed. And then now we had Nicole join the board and she is very eager to make sure that things are progressing. And so we've still had to get other things out of the way before we can continue with that. So now we are on to finishing the third part. And when the bylaws are done, we will be able to give it to the lawyer to make sure that there's no missed loopholes or anything like that. And once we get their blessing, then we will be able to vote them in. And to make them bylaws. Right, but when's it going to be completed by? We don't have a date. I mean, the goal, right, is to have them done within six months. Nicole, does that make sense? And then, yes, I wanted to add a comment too. Yes, we need to make sure that we get these done and get them out to the lawyer. That is our top priority right now and making sure that we have a communication. And we've been communicating very frequently, pretty much weekly lately. And we want to make sure that we're able to kind of get things out of, checked off our list in a way that we can get things completed and have them in line for what we need to get these grants completed. We have been working and continue to work through that and are working very closely to, to make sure. We are hoping that we are hiring someone with more experience. Bringing in someone with more experience. And then we obviously don't have somebody with a lot of grant rate experience, but hopefully we can recruit someone to help us with that. So we are continuing to work on that. But again, it is at the very top of our list. It's at the top of our list. And we recognize again, we've got a lot of things on our list, but thank you so much for your comments. We really appreciate it. Okay, Tim, are you good? Did you want to add another comment? No, okay. All right. What other comments do we have on the floor today? Bama. No, my name's Skippy, but I can change my, I can rename it. Hold on. Okay, how about DHCC? Anyway, a couple of things. I did email board@dhcc.org and never received a reply. Which I was disappointed. I know that communication is very important. And for especially for our deaf community. And so those messages should be checked and replied to. Again, it's already the 21st. I messaged on the fourth, so. Also for those who want to be involved in the board meetings and the webinar style, I want to thank you for that. I would suggest though that you label your positions in your titles on here. So just so that everyone knows who you are when they are watching on Zoom. Traditionally in person, person, right? The president will stand at a certain place, you know, who they are and how the board is ran. But now with COVID and everything being virtual, I would suggest at least having, you know, President Steve Longo. And Steve Longo said, yes, good point. Thank you. I should. I think all of the board should. Especially since it says Steve Longo. Right? If we have our names, so we could say Steve President. And so that we know who's who and who the officers are. So that would be really good to do that. And but it's important that the board at DHCC make sure that everyone knows that. But honestly, I have not looked at the email, so. We'll have to go and check that. The email address and make sure that that works and that it can be forwarded to everybody as well. It's board@dhcc.org. We should be making sure that we get those messages as well. And then if the board too, we could also if we could get access to that email account, that would be great. Okay, other comments? Thank you, Skippy. Nicole? I was personally frustrated with the email. We have the email, but we don't have access to that. I've asked for it. And I was referred to Alex for getting email access and did not get that. But before we had tried with vacant, we had vacant positions and expectations were not met. And so yes, so thank you. And we can reset the passwords and all of that. So I will work with Alex, Alexander, to make sure that we can make that happen. But yes, that was a frustration. I know for many like myself as well. Okay, other comments? For our town hall, this is our once a year community comment session. Uh huh, Skippy? Okay, I actually put my name on here now. I am curious. For those of you who have joined the board or those of you who, have you ever done a board retreat, like a in-depth meeting, just to talk about parliamentary procedures, how, what a good leader is, all of that? We had a board retreat when I was on the board in the 90s and it was just a great way for us. And I'm not sure if you guys have done that. Just a suggestion, it would help you guys to learn more, support each other and to make sure that you have a joint mission and making sure that everything is met. And Steve's saying, that's a good question. And we did have a short training by Tricia and Sal. If you remember, we did that online. It was on Zoom. They talked about roles, boards. But really, we weren't able to physically get together because of COVID. But we will look into that to see about parliamentary procedures on Zoom and everything. It is possible that we can do that. Maybe we can do a video or have a video of a person who's really good with parliamentary procedures. And they can explain that to us so that maybe we can get the videos where every new board member can watch that video and know what their duties are or what, how they can contribute to the board. And then the board member can watch that and be able to more, better participate in the board. It would be great. I think if we can get a video ready, it'd be a good investment. I'm thinking of the, you're talking about the video, but that'd be for the board only, right? There is a book. I mean, that may work too. Tim, did you have something to add? There was a CD. There was a CD. And a DVD that was given to the board. I don't know where it is. It could have been lost or not, but it's the last time. I believe that's when Janice was president. But as I suggested that we get that book. And so we looked through that book and it did help. I mean, some of it is very dry, pretty boring. But I would recommend that for you. It's a good read and then you can watch that information, but it would really help. I think it would really help the board. And Steve said, we will find it. We're going to go ahead and switch interpreters now. Just to clarify to what is this sign? Sorry, I'm getting messages. Thank you. Responding to Nicole, this is Steve Longo. It's parliamentary, parliamentary procedures. How to make a motion, how to pass a motion, what to do with a quorum, when to meet, who's absent, taking role, all of that. It's called parliamentary procedures. And it's what they do with formal meetings, big corporations, parliamentary procedures and all of that. We are small. We don't have a parliamentarian because we are a small organization and we follow basic rules of parliamentary procedures. But there is a book somewhere. I'll have to find it. But I can get a copy to you. So you guys can learn more of the basics of how it works. There you go. It's an old one. Okay. And next. Skippy said it was expensive. I'm just kidding. Okay, who is next? Do we have more comments? Tim? Nicole, what's your name sign? And you said that you noticed that things are coming up. If there's one way, I am. Michelle said that the board needs to reset the password in the chat. So I'm just gonna, so she said that she needs, you need to, the board needs to reset the password. And Michelle said she believes that DHCC does have the DVD of Bummy's Parliamentary Procedures. It's super dry. Michelle said she agrees with me that it is dry, but that it is beneficial. And so I did read it and it put me to sleep really. So every time I was tired, I would just read it before I went to bed. But it's good. It's important and good things to know too. And it's something that you don't have to abide by like 100% like Steve Longo said, right? There are some boards that have to follow it to a T and some don't. So at least learn the basics. Yeah. And then Alex said, maybe we need to create, you need to create your own. And then Nicole saying, yes, if there's something that I can kind of read, it may take a while to get through, but okay, yes. And thank you so much. There was a lot of chat coming through and then I was watching the interpreters too. But yes, if it's a good read, I'll get through it. Skippy? Bummy, you can also stream on Venmo. It's only seven or eight dollars to stream on Venmo or on Vimeo. You can also get it through Dawn Sign Press. And there is more in-depth information, but also if you wanted to save some time and watch online, you can do that. Skippy? It's Vimeo, V-I-M-E-O. Vimeo, it's, there's a very basic, basic video on that, on Vimeo. It's 27 27 minutes. And then it's $7, well, $7.99, so $8. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm trying to watch the time. It's 8:33. What other comments? Skippy? And in terms of the community, it's a challenge, everything being on Zoom and it's a different platform if they do webinar. Or they have Google meets, right? There's a lot of different platforms to use. But I've seen it's been a huge challenge too, in terms of interpreters. One part that I want to work on is I'm having a huge issue is interpreters availability. I am requesting interpreters. I've been using VRI. It's not always the best solution, but sometimes better than nothing. I've noticed too, that the pool of interpreters is getting smaller. And I know that with the RID certified, not many people are getting, as many people are getting certified. And I think that I am going to be starting to travel a little bit more, right, for small events and interpreters are still not available. So I think interpreting continues to be an issue. I don't have any answers, but I think also the number of qualified interpreters. Yes, Skippy, you are right. The number of interpreters is getting smaller. They're moving, changing careers, working from home. There's a variety of reasons. But like Michelle said too, we should try to get, if we can find interpreters, like right now, we have Erin with us. But this is a lot for just one interpreter, right? Because there wasn't a team available. So hopefully hopefully her throat's not too dry from talking so much. But yeah, if we can also just be mindful of slowing down the pace a little bit, since we do only have one interpreter with us tonight. And knowing that the process of interpreting does require quite a bit of cognitive work as well. So be mindful of that and be intentional, right, about the interpreters that we have and want to make sure that we can be a little bit easier on Erin. But we, right, we do have Jessica, who is a board member and is relying on listening to the voice interpreter, which is why we have Erin with us tonight. So yes, of course, we are, thank you, Jessica, for your, your patience with all of us too, tonight. Yes, but interpreting is such an important issue. I completely agree. And it's a serious issue. So we want to find a way to make more of an effective effort for interpreters. And for boards too, I mean, right, we don't have that much of a budget and we're not that rich. But we need to be careful too about how we continue to spend our money. Thank you. This is Michelle. I wanted to add. We all know that there is a shortage, there's a nationwide shortage of interpreters. And there's been many interpreters here locally who are being hired by the four districts, at the college and the university, and they are full-time with benefits. And also it's competitive and we're not seeing enough interpreters graduates from the program. We obviously need more. So we want to encourage, if you want to become an interpreter and join the interpreter training program, become certified. We need more interpreters. We're trying to find more interpreters. And we are working with pre-certified interpreters who have the goal of becoming certified. We all have a huge need for interpreters. I completely understand. Sometimes I need one and I get frustrated too. And so we're doing the best that we can. I wish we had the ability to clone some interpreters. It would be really nice. But we're doing the best that we can. And Tim, you're raising your hand? I know that, is it CSUN? Am I wrong? Has there been any changes with? I feel that the town is growing, right? We're having more than even the Bay Area or LA. I feel like we should by now have I believe that we're growing here. And so is there anyone, maybe Michelle, but do you see any changes with the funding?
I have a question.
Can everyone see me? You asked a question, so we're all sister agencies and watching the funds and seeing if we're going to get more funds. But three or four years ago, we were all talking, trying to figure out how we were going to do this because we all wanted to claim the same money. And so they do look at the history and unfortunately recently they didn't count death or heart appearing, which we really wanted, right? We wanted them to have that in the census, but they didn't. We wanted to be able to use it for that purpose to show proof that we had increased numbers, but they didn't. They didn't do the death line, heart of hair, like that. We're trying to find a fair way of dividing the funds. So someday. But Steve said, or Tim said, right, but the populations, I mean, I'm sure Fresno's growing and the numbers of people moving to Fresno too. I mean, I feel like there's a big difference now. I could be wrong. I mean, I haven't looked at the census or anything like that or compared it. I mean, I feel like there's a big difference now. I could be wrong. I mean, I haven't looked at the census or anything like that or compared it to the recent one to the one before. But. If the numbers are going up and other numbers are going down, I feel like that should also change our budget. From the other agencies and maybe some of that funding should be given to Fresno. But I know that they're not gonna be happy, but I really feel like Fresno should be getting more if their population is increasing. It's funny that you say that because even just this afternoon, we had a deaf access program, a CDSS. Budget training related to the, related to refugees from Afghanistan. Surprisingly, Fresno was not one of the. All the other societies, but not Fresno. There's a lot of refugees going to NorCal. But not to Fresno. They're not coming to the valley, so they're like, oh, see, we need more money than you in Fresno. I'm like, no, we need the money here too. And we see our numbers increasing, the number of homeless here. A lot of people who are showing up in Fresno, but it's just not refugees yet. But I know that they're gonna come here and we're probably gonna be the last to get refugees. But the point is, we are always kind of talking about how we can barely divvy up the money. I mean, that's ongoing conversation. And Steve saying, right, politics and government and anyway. And then Rose may say, please watch the deaf interpreters too, because sometimes we may miss something. And may need to get someone's attention for clarification or for additional information. Thank you. Yes, but back to Michelle. Michelle's right, yeah, in Fresno, Fresno's growing, right? And there are homes being built left and right. And there's tons of new homes being built. And I've noticed that in the Bay Area and in LA, people are moving out of the Bay Area and out of LA to Fresno. And there have, I've noticed, right, so many new people coming to town. And so I feel like that should be revisited and the census, right, about how the numbers are shifting. I think numbers are so important and like Michelle said, right, numbers of deaf and hard of hearing are increasing. And we also want to make sure that we are a lot of the appropriate funds. Um, for that, and I think that the census is gonna be key. We have a lot in Madera. There's a lot of Hispanic, the Hispanic population in Madera is growing. And then I feel like it's everywhere in Madera is getting bigger for sure. This is Skippy. Wait for the interpreters to switch. Okay, are you guys ready? I've noticed, um, through work, right, that the numbers are growing here and of course, in the Bay Area. Um, and LA, people are moving now to the Central Valley because they're working remote. And so Zoom has become so popular that they can afford to buy property here or a house. Maybe they have been struggling to buy a price and I think a house and I think that's why the value is now going up. Before, maybe with a moderate house was three hundred thousand, now it's four or five hundred thousand, right? And people are selling for a profit and people are, who want to buy are struggling. Anyway. Not the point. So on Zoom, um, I've noticed that it's been really popular, right? People are using Zoom and people are using Zoom now more to participate in activity. So you can now, right, they're having to buy laptops and iPads, having to get Zoom installed. I have been involved with teaching people how to use iPhones. I have iPhone and Android training. And. I've noticed, you know, Alex emails on Fridays, those blasts and people are hesitant to join. Michelle and Harvey, everyone has been involved already taking the training and learning more about communication access, right? That's the point of it all. And the good news though is that the program, which we just started last month, is called ASL Now. Which is on a website, it's www-california-phones.org. And then pull up the website on the right-hand corner, you'll see ASL Now, click. Wait, what? It's California's. Phones.org. Okay, California phones, sorry, I was signing too fast. So California phones.org. On the top right-hand screen, you'll see ASL Now, click on that, then a live person says, can I help you? Of that, and so the problem, so you can get, if you need help with your, anything with a phone or anything, you can get it there. Also, another number is an eight hundred number that you can call and automatically goes to somebody. Um, it's to help people who are deaf. So that just started last month. I will be able to email DHGC. The information so they can get that out during their Friday news blast. So that's great news though. Is just a way to get more deaf people involved in Zoom and learning how to navigate this platform. Um, so yeah, it's great for any of you who need extra assistance. And Steve saying, thank you so much, Skippy. We don't have much time left, um, so I would like to take this time to wrap it up. Um, also give the interpreter a little bit of a break. But I know that the town hall too isn't something that's just once a year to get feedback. We welcome feedback any time of the year. And again, that's board@dhgc.org. Once we have access to that, we will. Send that information out to you via email. If you guys have any questions, concerns, issues, whatever that may be, you can forward us. That information at board@dhgc.org. Um, again, board@dhgc.org. And we'd love to hear from all of you. Nicole? Um, one last comment. I know that we, there is a shortage of interpreters and so we are gonna have to think out of the box. Like captioning, how to spotlight people better. One thing too, that I think is important. Is that we maybe next time for a meeting or if we only have one interpreter, maybe we have a five-minute break. Every twenty minutes or something. This is a very long time for one interpreter to be working. So if we can build that in next time to be able to support the interpreter that we do have, so they can take a bio break if needed. Just an idea. Um, and then also I wanted to check, I checked the chat. Um, I wanted to make sure that everything was covered there, so please, again. If there's any comments, please make sure to put that there and we will be able to check that. We want to make sure that we are visible and that we can help improve the services. So thank you so much for your feedback. We really appreciate it. And we, again, we are working on our action items and they are being prioritized. But about what we need to handle first. And again, there's only four of us, so we're doing as much as we can with such a small little army. But we are motivated to get to work. One thing I want to add is can we try to please set up? Well, it's been a problem, but I feel like we go back and forth, we cancel a meeting, then they get, the councils get moved. I know that things come up, but I really think that if the president can't make it, then the vice president should be able to host the meeting. The problem is, is that when it's canceled or the date is changed, the community. I mean, I've tried to encourage people to attend, right? And the, what, the thing that I, customers, right, tell me, oh, DHGC, I'm like, well, why don't you go and complain? Go to the board and they just kind of blow it off. Oh, I show up, but then the meeting got canceled. Or I was gonna go, but then I wasn't available and the time keeps changing. So. If there's some way that we can get a regular schedule set, so people know when. Instead of just changing the date and time to kind of, you know, for your own needs. I think they need to get a scheduled date and time and I think that the number of attendees will grow. I mean, just an idea. Yes, historically, right, deaf club was when we had a deaf club. But it was a regular schedule, right? You knew exactly where to meet. You knew exactly what day of the month. Maybe it was gonna be the last Saturday or the first Friday or first Saturday or something, right? But it was a set schedule and though deaf people knew when deaf club was. I think that as a board, we should do the same thing and get a regular schedule again to be able to make something more static. And not just be changing all the time. But so that people know when to show up and when we're gonna be having the meetings and wanting to get involved. But good point, Tim, thank you. Okay, just take twenty seconds here. Um, really simple. For most people, I think they're familiar with Zoom or if not, maybe you could do a Facebook Live. Because people will be able to see the action on Facebook. They don't have to actually attend, but they can see the information there. And that would be one way for them to do that. Facebook Live is also really important. I think social media is key, streaming on YouTube, something like that. So you can pull more deaf people in and more deaf people will see that. Okay. Good. Um, yeah, when it's, the recording will go up on YouTube. Um, and then it'll show up on Facebook too. So people will be able to see the recordings. At this point, we are trying to, we were trying to do a Facebook Live, but it had problems with the internet video quality, all of that. And so we decided to do it this way today. Uh, I feel like we still have a good, pretty good number in attendance today and I really appreciate everyone for coming. Right, um, in terms of Facebook Live, honestly, I feel like Facebook Live is more deaf by, deaf-blind friendly. It doesn't change settings so much like Zoom does. So maybe we can test that a time or two. And see if we can work it out that way, but I think that would be good, a good suggestion. Pop-ups. Another thought too, from my work. I have. Like, so deaf can email comments at thornton.com. But not all deaf people are proficient or comfortable doing that in English. We also do have a phone number where they can call and leave a message. So I think the board should think about that too. The board can set up a number. Specifically for the board and people can call, no one will answer. It'll just ring and then when it's time, it will go to a signed mail message and deaf people can express their concerns via sign language. Whether that be good or bad, right, rooms of improvement, suggestions, whatever that may be, and then the board will be able to get those messages. And the messages will be routed to an email. The emails could be routed to all the board members, just a thought. Yeah, can we talk to you more about that later? And Tim's like, no, 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 leave me out of it. No, leave me out. Nicole? And yeah, that's really cool. I like that idea. Um, so maybe Steve, we can touch base later to see how we can get that set up. We'll talk more about that later, okay? Steve said, okay, now to wrap up, it's five to nine. Go ahead and give Erin's voice a big break after talking for the last two hours. So thank you. And next time we have a meeting, we now know that we can do. Um, at least give, have a short break before we start the town hall. Um, normally, we only do community comments over the town hall and so we need to get elections and the board meeting out of the way. So. We decided to do two-in-one, which was a lot and hopefully we won't have to do that again. We want to make sure that we are able to separate the. We should have had the town hall in August and the meeting in September. So hopefully we can keep that schedule next year. Anyway, thank you so much to the deaf interpreters as well. Thank you to the rest of the board for the community. Skippy, Tim and everybody else here for the DHGC staff who were also involved tonight. Thank you for having open eyes and open hearts and really just making sure that DHGC can grow and thrive. Okay, we are all here for the same mission.